I will call the June third, two thousand twenty-five North Providence Town Council meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion impossible, action and vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meetings of May sixth, two thousand twenty-five and May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, second by Councilman Pollock, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number two, seven eight seven Restaurant and Lounge LLC DBA seven eight seven Restaurant and Lounge. Summon's was delivered to Liz Vasquez, President Registered Agent for seven eight seven Restaurant and Lounge LLC DBA seven eight seven Restaurant and Lounge, located at twelve seventy Minto Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor license, liquor and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failure to make payment to the North Providence, the town of North Providence for police details consistent with the required conditions of their license. Is anyone here from seven eight seven? Just come to the microphone, please. You just state your name for the record?
Carmen Vasquez.
Thank you. We ran into this problem a while back with the detail bill. And we were approached by our police department to, they informed us that it's happened again, so.
Well, we have a meeting, I think it was in January, and the officer told us to pay twenty-five hundred dollars every month, which I'm paying that every month.
Okay, can I, if you could just step aside, I'm gonna have someone here from our police department. Just state your name for the record, please.
Lieutenant Kevin Gindin.
Thank you, Lieutenant. What is going on with the payments?
So, to the best of my knowledge, there was only one payment made of twenty-five hundred dollars? Or you have it?
I have the book of them, and they say that's gonna be twenty-five hundred a month.
What was the last payment you made? Well, our records show that you have an outstanding bill. Okay, well, if that's being done, you know, it's not being communicated to us with our records, so.
Can I, can I ask?
Councilman, go ahead.
Who are you making the payments to? Who are you making the payments to?
I went to the North Providence Police Department.
Police Department, where are you taking them? You're taking them to, to the department, or you mailing them in? What are you doing?
I go directly there, and then they check.
And you give them to whoever's at the front desk?
Yes.
And if you know, or Lieutenant, if you know, on a monthly basis, how much is the police detail bill, roughly?
I believe it's two thousand a month.
It's about two thousand a month?
Two thousand a month.
So if they continue to pay twenty-five hundred, they're chipping away five hundred roughly?
Roughly.
Okay. What's, what's? So right, right now, the total is sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars.
You were chipping away for a while.
So, and, and I agree, it's probably not a feasible continuing agreement. However, at this point, the only information that I have is that she made an agreement with the police department for twenty-five hundred a month, and she's been making those payments. I'm, I'm happy to send her back to make a new agreement, or potentially make a new agreement, but at this point, my information is she's being cooperative.
Yeah, she did show me a check, I'm gonna have to do some research, I'm going based off of our detail program. So I have to see where, if the money's going back to the town, and then comes back to us. But it's not being communicated to me, so I'm gonna have to look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, listen, I'm gonna take your word for it, but at the end of the day, we're still got a pretty big balance here that the Colonel's concerned about.
Okay, Councilman Pollock, you have a question? Is there any other questions from the council? So, Lieutenant, I'm sorry, I can't see, but you've seen that there is proof of payment?
There was a check there whether, where it went, again, I'm not.
Okay, tomorrow, can you bring in proof of payment to the clerk's office? And then I'm gonna have the clerk call, call the chief, and we'll, we'll discuss this further.
So, you might still understand it's only five hundred dollars off the balance, because if she paid twenty, if she paid twenty-five hundred, two thousand.
As far as the balance goes, we'll have to deal with that next. Let's, let's discuss the plan that was.
She does have a check that was made out, but there is a payment for a thousand eighteen that was posted on five sixteen this year. But prior, prior to that, there was a payment made on seven one, two thousand twenty-four. So, based on this information that I'm looking at. We're gonna have to do some research into our records.
All right, we're, we're gonna do this tomorrow, so we're not doing it in public, that's not fair to you, that's not fair to the police department. And I'm gonna have to ask that this matter be continued, because I'm at a loss right now.
Yeah, I'm at a loss too, like I said, I'm going based on the records that's available to me.
Well, I, I have a motion that I'd like to make. I'd, I'd make a motion that we continue this matter to, have to be our August meeting now, to our August meeting. However, and with the establishment remaining open. However, I would issue, I would also, as part of my motion, have a conditional cease and desist, conditional suspension, if you do not come to Town Hall tomorrow and show proof. And so, as long as you're not lying to us, you're good to go till August. If you're lying, I would ask that our clerk issue a cease and desist to prevent operations until our August meeting.
Okay, that's been, a motion by Councilman Martone, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Laporte, you have any questions? Have you, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Item number three, Elite Lounge and Bistro LLC DBA Elite Lounge and Bistro. Summon was, was delivered to Carlos Nolasco Acevedo, Registered Agent for Elite Lounge and Bistro LLC DBA Elite Lounge and Bistro, located at seventeen fifty-nine Minto Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, for a formal hearing and possible vote concerning the BV liquor and entertainment licenses for this establishment and the failure to make payment to the town of North Providence for police details consistent with the required conditions of their license. Okay, the total for this one is fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Is anyone here? Can you just come to the mic? Just state your name for the record, please.
Carlos Nolasco.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nolasco, like the last one, has there been, been any communication?
Last communication was, say, about four, five months ago with the police department. I only made one payment towards the balance.
How much was that?
I think it was worth of one week of detail, which was like over five hundred bucks.
Do you foresee yourself paying the balance? Do you have a payment plan?
I just, I was, if you guys would give me a little bit more time to make another payment, maybe September, I think I will pay a nice chunk back, back to the balance.
Well, I mean.
It's just, but, you know, they've been open since nineteen, they're, they're still struggling to pay so many back towards it, seven eight seven. My business was only open for a year, you know, I haven't seen no profit yet, so I was hoping that you guys can allow me to.
I understand, the, the issue we face is like, we don't wanna put these details on bars and restaurants. We, like, we go out of our way not to, and we wait till the very end when it comes as a suggestion of our police department, because they're the ones that have to go out and answer the calls, you know?
But, like I said, I was open for a year, I only had one artication, I don't, I don't think I ever had any type of violation, and then towards the end of the detail, you guys say, okay, let, let's stand up for one more month for no reason, which is to read a letter, and that, that, that gave me like another month of detail, you know, I, it's, it's tough for, for a brand-new business.
Go ahead, Councilman. Right now, you don't have any details.
No, no, I don't have no detail.
So this bill is not climbing, correct? Bill is fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand, yeah.
All right. What, what I would like to do is continue this to August, provided you make two payments towards that.
In August?
Between now, one in July and one in, and one in August.
You got it.
Those payments, I mean, I, I think they should be at least five hundred. I don't know how anybody else feels, so five hundred in July, five hundred in August. Okay. I would also ask, well, this is my thoughts, my, my other thought would be, between now and our August meeting, you meet with police and you figure out a payment plan.
You got it.
That they're comfortable with, that you're comfortable with, and at our August meeting, I would expect that both those payments have been made, and that there is some arrangement in place going forward.
Yeah, I believe by September, I might be able to do half.
By September? I'm, I'm not even, I, I, my personal preference is as long as you're showing, what we can have is you having no communication with police, and, you know, them trying to get a hold of you, and they can't get a hold of you. That's the thing that bothers, but if you're making regular, consistent payments, and you're not having any problems, I think, you know, we, we try and work with businesses as best we can in situations like that.
I understand, thank you.
I think the key point in there is no more problems, as long as it's good, and you don't need any more detail back in there.
You got it.
I have to agree, I agree with Mr. Councilman Martone.
I had something to what you just said, I think that instead of waiting until August, I think something should be made with the North Providence Police Department immediately, and work on it that way. Maybe you can get a hold of Lieutenant, you didn't talk on the side over there, set something up where you can do it, I think it should be immediate instead of waiting.
That's, I made it with the police department?
Sure.
Okay, oh, so like.
But, but here, here's the point, I, I know our police department has tried to reach out to you.
Yeah, but, yeah, they have, I've been.
And they.
With health issues and stuff.
And there's been a lack of communication.
There have been, yeah.
We don't want, I think you know, I've worked with you, we've gone against recommendations of the police department. We don't want both of you coming here. It's the same to every month, like, help us help you, you know, like, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna lie, I was fully prepared to come here tonight and just cancel out both licenses, because it's a lot less aggravation for me, so.
Okay.
You know, and I don't wanna do that.
I mean, it's a family business, I've been kinda harsh, and like I said, you know, we only have one.
But you have to understand, there's, there's thirty-five other liquor licenses in the town, it's the same two bars in front of us every month, you know?
Every month, I haven't been here for a long time.
You're here a lot more than every other bar, you know you are.
You've been coming for a while.
Me?
I'm trying to help you, don't, I'm trying to help you here.
Okay.
I'm just explaining a point. If you wanna go back, and we'll chart the agendas to see who's the top two bars that come before the council. It's, it's seven eight seven and Elite.
I'm not gonna argue with you, I take the deal that he said, and then, and then let's move on then.
But, you know, don't leave here and not communicate with our police department.
I'll talk to him.
Try and work out an agreement now, and let's get this settled.
You got it.
So, is there any other questions? So did you wanna put that, is there a motion? Motion's been made by Councilman Martone, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Bacala, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. I have to move item number twenty-four up. Fruit Hill Grant, Councilman Laporte, request discussion and possible vote on an update on the Fruit Hill Grant. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had thought we would have a couple representatives here to help us out along with this grant. Like to have the mayor, I think he was invited, the Bernie Salvatore from DPW, and I believe Dave D'Amico was working on a design, but we're not quite sure of that. We do have two grants, one from Rhode Island Infrastructure for eighty thousand, five hundred dollars, which has been awarded for plans and designs. The second grant is for six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for stormwater and drainage. The people in the area, one specific area in the Fruit Hill section on Wasiota Street, in particular, have been seeing this orange-colored water come through onto their streets, and it's been like that for quite a while. This, this in particular, this grant is dated back to two thousand twenty-four, March, I believe, when we heard from Senator Reed's office on this originally. We're trying to get some clarity on who is, if we do have a designer, an engineer on this. We'd like to know when he was hired, if there were any plans drawn up yet for this, because this seems to be sitting on the docket, it, it really is not something that our DPW director can move forward on to, to look at until we have plans and a design, but we don't know if we've gone that far. And the frustration lies in that some people are calling myself and I'm sure Councilman Bacala, and we just wanna give them answers, we have a gentleman in the audience tonight from that area, Mr. Curtis, if he would like to speak. Please feel free, come up to the microphone and give us a little bit of your detail, sir.
Jim Curtis, nice to meet all of you. It's Wasiota Avenue, it's a dead end, this has been going on for a couple of years, maybe three years. The amount of water that comes down the end of the street floods in front of one of my neighbors, Joe Caderos house, comes down and runs down the hill. In the winter, it's completely a sheet of ice, I don't know how anybody hasn't recognized this. This is the Indian Village, but you can tell Public Works, the Indians moved out a couple of years ago, twenty years ago. There's no Indians there, they don't have to be afraid of the Indians. But I'd like to see about getting it done, and we don't, the neighbors coming to see me. I'm just a resident, you know, I'm just a little old resident, but I wanna see it get done, it's dangerous. It's a lot of water, you should take a ride by there, it runs twelve, twelve months out of the year. I don't know whether it's an underground stream, you know, but it's, it's dangerous, it's, it's really dangerous, and I haven't seen anybody down there doing anything. And, you know, there's some elderly people down that end, and they come down and talk to me, because I know a few peoples. I've been driving to Councilman Laporte and Bacala crazy with calling them, but, you know, we wanna get it fixed. I don't know why the Public Works hasn't done anything. We're just looking for an answer and getting it done. Can it be fixed? What is it? Is it an underground stream? Is it broken pipe? But there's a substantial amount of water, and like I said, it comes down, Wasiota, and runs down the hill, and goes into the drain at the bottom of the hill. But in the winter, you wouldn't believe what it looks like, you could actually skate on it, probably, so.
All right, Councilman?
Yeah, I, in fact, the chief, Roger, and I had gone down there many times during the wintertime. Someone had taken out a stop sign because of the ice.
Yeah, somebody took it out.
And, and Bernie had kinda gone in to give a quick fix, and he, he did, he had to dig out a storm drain there, but he said there's a serious problem there. My thing is, we try to respond to the, the constituents in the area and say, listen, we've got this money, let's just find out how and when, it's not on Bernie to get it done, it's, we've gotta get this money allocated to an engineer, see if the engineer has drawn the plans up, and let's move forward on it, so, and.
I just hope that it's done by the time they fix the Washington Bridge, I hope that gets done.
So, Councilman?
It's been that long, it's been that long, really.
So, Councilman?
I've only been here six years, so.
The money's been applied for and carried.
Applied for, and it has been awarded to Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, is awarded, and waiting for plans and a design. Do we have an engineer that's physically looked at it and made any designs? That's why I wanted them here, to see if we could find that out for the people.
Okay.
I mean, it's a safety matter, but it's, it's been going on for too long, way too long. You know, and I gotta.
Totally agree.
Find out what's going on, see what's going on.
Let's send a, you wanna send a letter?
I, I would like to make a motion to.
No, Mr. Caderos was supposed to be here, but he didn't show up, but I told him I'd come down. But, I mean, Joe's been complaining about that for a long time.
Long time, long time.
In the summer, it's water, in the winter, it's ice, it's sheets of ice, and all the way down the hill, because it runs.
Yeah.
You know?
It, it, to me, I've been there several times, and it's, looks like rusted water to me, it's.
I don't know, I, I've been down there, but it looks like it's coming out of a hole somewhere over there, I don't know what, somebody tried to fix it in the past, and did something with it, I don't know, but I think it's an underground stream, we have several over there.
Yep. And that runs down in the water, but I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that, that we send a letter to the administration to, to explain to us what, what stage we are at with this grant, as far as the design, to fix this problem in particular, and other issues that are in Fruit Hill area, because we, we've had money allocated to get this done, and it's bothering these people for a long time now, I think it's time we address it.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Laporte, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a, we have a, we have a tree over there we got to take care of too.
Yes, well, that's, that's another issue, but that's a safety issue too, it's hanging over the street.
We're on, I'm just making that point, because we roll like, uh.
Not gonna talk about it tonight. Okay, item number four, Class BV Liquor License. Notice was given of a public hearing to be held on this date in the Providence Journal on May sixteenth and twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, for a new Class BV Limited Liquor License. Soldy Portugal Restaurant Incorporated DBA sold to Portugal, fifteen twenty-five Smith Street, North Province, Rhode Island, zero two nine one one. Just state your name for the record, please.
Hi, Mr. President, Jeff Caffrey, an attorney with the law firm of Resnick and Caffrey. I also have with me the principal of Mildred Alvarado, uh, who may also be testifying.
Thank you. Um, you all have the information in front of you. Any questions on the liquor license?
So, uh, we appreciate your patience. I know it's been a while before you, uh, come up here and get this, and we've tried to help you as much as we can. Um, so a couple of questions are, uh, what your hours, what are they gonna be?
Uh, the hours, um, on the Tuesday through Thursday, uh, the hours is gonna be from four to ten. Uh, Friday through Sunday, uh, the hour's gonna be eleven, and initially, they're gonna try and extend the hours up until perhaps as late as one, depending upon, uh, how much demand there is.
And any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So, so move.
Your motion's been made for the Class BV Liquor License by Councilman Di Lorenzo.
I'm sorry, we, we can, discussion, I can ask him a second.
Do I got a by Councilman Fiamma Getty? Any questions?
Yeah, sorry, you, you moved too fast when I had a couple of questions. What, what's their experience with serving liquor?
Um, I, I, would you like to answer that question?
What was your question again?
What's your experience with serving liquor? Have you worked in other restaurants, bars?
Um, so, I personally don't have, uh, experience, uh, but we have a couple bartenders that have experience that we hired.
Okay.
And we kept sure to fight, obviously.
Yeah. Yeah. And, um, and right now, what are your current hours?
Um, they're eleven to ten, um, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, uh, but Tuesday to Thursday, it's, uh, four to ten.
And if you were to get the liquor license, um, is there any pla- plans to change the operations in any way?
No, it's, it's intended to be a restaurant, um, that, you know, after dinner, I always relax at the bar, maybe watch a game. Some entertainment.
You planning on moving any tables or doing anything like that at a certain point in the night?
Well, I, the, the thought was that they're gonna put some of the tables outside if they get the approval of, of the council for outside dining. But they're not in, planning on increasing the capacity beyond which they're right now.
But, and, and I guess what I'm asking, at some point, is the format gonna change where you would move tables? Create like a dance floor or anything like that in the place?
Uh, no, it's not intended to be a dance floor. It's gonna be more of like a lounge type of thing after dinner.
Okay. Are you planning on serving your full menu for the whole time you're open?
They, they're gonna serve a full menu, um, for so long as there are diners there, and then they'll do like, uh, appetizers and small plates thereafter.
Good. Yeah, yeah, um. I mean, I think my, my preference would be to do, uh, some sort of probationary license. Um, maybe until renewal time. They're gonna have to renew the license in this December first anyway. Um, only because, uh, doesn't sound like the operators have a lot of experience, uh, with liquor service, and, you know, just my experience is that places that serve food versus places that serve food and liquor tend to be different. And I think this gives them enough time to prove themselves, and then we'll, you know, we'll go from, from there as far as renewal time.
The, the only thing I would say to address that, uh, Mr. Martin, is that they've expended a significant amount of money and reliance upon them being able to operate a full-service restaurant. If for some reason December rolls around and, and the council feels that uh, they haven't lived up to what your expectations are, you've got the ability to pull that license, which would be really punitive. I mean, they've been operating since March without a liquor license, and, and it's literally a dry opening, and it's, it's very detrimental to the business. So, I mean, obviously, we have to come back and renew periodically anyway, or we'd ask that there not be any restrictions on the initial issuance of the license.
So, I, I, I mean, we, we have also not only given probationary license, but we've also given restrictions with regard to hours and things like that. I don't want to do that. But I, I do like to keep the option open that it's a probationary license. When we give a full license and then it's subject to renewal, uh, it's becomes a, a steeper hill for us to climb. And my personal preference is I want to keep control over it. This is a plaza that has caused problems in the past. Um, it's surrounded by neighbors, and I have every hope that there's not gonna be any issues, and I think if they, you know, run the establish, I haven't heard any complaints, I don't think we've done. So, um, I don't expect there to be any issues, and I would expect that the license would get renewed. Um, but, you know, I, I think, I feel like we've done probationary on a pretty regular basis here.
Recently, we have.
Yeah, uh, just, just because I feel like we've, we've gotten burned from time to time. Um, and, you know, again, not, uh, not, I don't, I hope that's not gonna happen. I don't think it'll happen. And, you know, as long as things run smoothly, I, there would be no reason in my mind, uh, for there to be any issue with the renewal.
Well, December one is when we renew. Till November?
I would say probationary till whenever the renewal happens. Like, I wouldn't want to stop them from operating. I just think whenever the renewal.
So, should I have it in November, so they come in for the renewal, um, before the bishop? When we do the November renewals?
I, I would say a probationary until December first. Uh, yeah, because theoretically, that's when, that's when the license would, the current year's license would expire.
Okay, a motion's been made in second. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number five, Entertainment License. Town Council to consider the approval of two entertainment licenses for Soldy Portugal Incorporated DBA sold to Portugal, fifteen twenty-five Smith Street, North Province, Rhode Island, DJ and other types of entertainment. Uh, please explain what kind of entertainment.
Uh, sure, right now, the expectation is that they're gonna have a guitar player in there and somebody with vocals. Um, they're really not planning to have a DJ initially, although that is something that might contemplate in the future. So basically, um, some, um, background music, some, uh, dinner music, and then, um, you know, nothing beyond really like a two-piece type of, uh, situation with the guitar and vocal. Not a band.
I will, uh, full disclosure, we just did deny a entertainment license in that plaza, um. Uh, you know, I'll defer to the councilmen that represent the area, but that is a tough plaza. It's very overcrowded, uh, parking can be an issue. Neighbors behind you have been an issue for years with anything that's going in that establishment. You guys can kind of.
I think that maybe we should, uh, relook at the entertainment lessons when we, we, we look at the license again on December first. I think that's the right, probably the right thing to do. I'm comfortable with that, Mario.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, uh, you know, I'm always, I, my personal preference when we give these licenses out is to slowly step them up. So, you know, they got the first license for food, and I know that's difficult to, to continue to run an operation, um. I think, you know, we approved the liquor license, and I, I, I agree with, with Steve, you know, I, I think it probably makes sense to see how that goes first. Uh, my worry is, you know, when you combine liquor and entertainment, um, you know, it, it has, I've seen it as a problematic recipe from time to time. I don't, um, have any problem with, you know, background music during dinner, and, you know, I don't think it should be silent. Um, but, um, yeah, I, I, I agree with Steve. I, I think it makes sense to, to see how they, see how it goes, and then
Go stick.
Go from there. And, and on top of the fact that, just to be fair, we did just deny a license, um, in that plaza.
Do you have any questions for us?
Well, I, I think was, I, I thought, uh, Mr. Di Lorenzo would said that he thought granted, but make it reviewable again in December or September.
I guess we can, we can relook at it again.
Yeah.
I'm, I didn't say granted.
No, not granted.
No, I was under the impression that we would do it.
We will, we look at it again, you know, uh, if we see that there is no trouble, like the things you just heard earlier, and, you know, we can relook at it.
So you wouldn't consider putting restrictions on the type of music that's done between now and December first to allow them to do the interior music, you know, guitar and, and vocal, you wanted to completely restrict it until December?
I, I don't think we want it in the very beginning at all.
Okay.
So, uh, the, the, uh, I mean, after that, we can, will we look at it?
So you can have background music?
Yeah.
You can.
We can have it now?
You can have background music, you just can't have a DJ, or you can't have.
Live entertainment.
No, no, no entertainment yet.
No live entertainment, you can have background music.
So you, you're talking about like a radio or something, uh, playing in the background, but not a, a live, uh, performance?
Yeah, yes. Okay, so I'll make a motion to deny the entertainment license, and we'll revisit it in December when they're up for renewal. It's in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'll, I'll make that motion.
Motion been made by Councilman Martin, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. And item number six, Outdoor Dining License. Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of an outdoor dining license for Soldy Portugal Incorporated DBA sold to Portugal, fifteen twenty-five Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island.
I, I, I personally have no problem given that. Maybe it helps the business a little bit.
Sorry, guys.
We appreciate that. So I, I, I have no problem given that.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to give them an outside, uh, dining license.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martin. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck with everything.
Thank you, good luck, and I'm glad that you have paella for one.
Okay, item number seven, Holiday Sales. Town Council considered to a vote for approval of a holiday license for BRC Retail LLC DBA Plato's Closet, fourteen oh one Douglas Avenue, North Providence. Just state your name for the record, please.
Stephanie Gardner.
Thank you very much. You all have the information in front of you. Is there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion been made by Councilman Fiamma Getty. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala. All those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fuck.
Item number eight, Pedler Vendor License. Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of a Pedler Vendor License for Phantom Fireworks to be sold at nineteen twenty Mineral Spring Avenue. Just state your name for the record.
Matthew Smith.
Okay, this gentleman's here every year. We've never had any issues. Uh, you all have the information in front of you. Is there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion been made by Councilman Fiamma Getty, seconded by Councilman Laporte. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Item number nine, Town Council to consider the approval of a Pedler Vendor License to sell fireworks from Keystone Novelties Distributors LLC, DBA Keystone Fireworks, ten at forty-one Smith Hill Road and fifteen twenty-five Smith Street. Just state your name for the record, sir?
Ed McMahon.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Does anybody have any questions? You all have the information in front of you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion been made by Councilman Fiamma Getty. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck. Item number ten, Temporary Outdoor Dining. Town Council to consider a vote for approval of a temporary outdoor dining license for the Social Kitchen Incorporated DBA The Social, fourteen forty-nine Mineral Spring Avenue, for June sixth through June eighth, two thousand twenty-five. For the St. Anthony's Feast, I've been asked to pass this off the agenda. And number eleven, Class F One Liquor License. Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of a Class F One Liquor License for Behind the Bars Mixology for an event at Camp Mian on October third, two thousand twenty-five. Just state your name for the record.
Jeremy Messenger.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Motion to approve?
So move.
Motion been made by Councilman Laporte, seconded by Councilman Pollock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. And number twelve, Class F One Liquor License. Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of a Class F One Liquor License for At Your Service Bartending for an event at Camp Mian on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, Gina Malazo Collins contacted me. Her child is graduating Steven only tonight, so she, they could not be here, but she is here every month, and we've never had an issue. Motion been made by Councilman Pollock, seconded by Councilman Laporte. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirteen, Private Investigator License. Town Council to consider the approval of a new private investigator license for Diago R. Mello, forty Sherwood Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Just state your name for the record, please.
Diago Mello.
Thank you very much. Um, you all have the information package in front of you. Is there any questions for Mr. Mello? Okay, it's been signed by the chief, so I have no
No problem.
further questions. I would like to entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Uh, that was made by Councilman Laporte, seconded by Councilman Bacala. Any further question? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number fourteen, Community Choice Aggregation. Freedom Ele- Energy Logistics respectfully requests the opportunity to allow CEO Bar Fromuth to make a presentation to the North Providence Town Council to introduce and explain community choice aggregation and electricity program. Just state your name for the record, please.
Uh, Art Fromuth, Providence, Rhode Island, Freedom Energy Logistics.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you very much for, uh, entertaining, uh, my audience tonight, um. Uh, I met with Mayor Lombardi, uh, back in October to discuss, uh, relatively new program here in the state of Rhode Island called Community Choice Aggregation. Um, the first, uh, Community Choice Aggregation Program launched in twenty twenty-three. There's a few communities that have, uh, made a move towards this program, and in its essence, it is a large-scale buying group created by the municipalities, and that's why I'm here before you today. Um, Rhode Island Energy is the current, um, utility here across the state of Rhode Island, and they offer electricity service under the guise of a program called Last Resort Service. Last Resort Service is a program for anybody that hasn't made an affirmative choice to move on to a third-party private electricity supplier. Uh, we all live in the state of Rhode Island, and we've seen our bills fluctuate from ten cents typically during the summertime to about seventeen or eighteen cents during the winter months. What this program seeks to do is to provide your residents in North Providence and other communities with some budget certainty and some savings versus the Last Resort Service. So what the jurisdiction does is they can take an affirmative vote to move into this program, and they create a buying pool of all of your residents and your small businesses that are clients of Rhode Island Energy. And they can go out and negotiate for third-party large-scale electricity contracts at the same scale as some of the large businesses, uh, here in Rhode Island, and get excellent discount rates and excellent terms and, uh, consumer protections. Um, this program has about, uh, just in New England alone, about two hundred and twenty jurisdictions that have made the move into this, and like I said, it's, it's new to Rhode Island, uh, but certainly not new to, to Massachusetts and to New Hampshire, where these programs have, have been in place for some time. Massachusetts is going all the way back to about twenty twelve. Uh, so I wanted to come before you today and, um, answer any questions you might have, and see if there was some interest in, uh, pursuing further information for North Providence.
How many, um, communities have you gone before to this point in Rhode Island?
I'm so sorry.
How many communities have you been before in Rhode Island to this point?
Uh, to this point in time, probably thirteen or fourteen.
Okay, and how's the reception?
Uh, you know, probably the, the warmest reception I've gotten is in the town of Westerly, who is planning to move forward this fall, and the coldest reception I've received is in Burlville, so.
Yeah, okay. Councilman Di Lorenzo, you had a question?
Yes, uh, so roughly, uh, signing up for this program, how much would the average resident save? What, 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 what are you doing here?
So it, it varies. Um, the savings over the last few years have been somewhat pronounced, and I, I wouldn't hold on to those as indicative of, of how you're going to perform in the future. Uh, we had a big run-up in the, um, utility market space after the war in Ukraine in, uh, twenty twenty-two into twenty twenty-three. So some of our communities, um, in Massachusetts save upwards of, uh, over, over half, uh, or a hundred percent. So the utilities in Massachusetts went up thirty-six cents. We had some communities that were eleven cents a kilowatt hour, so significant savings, but I, I think that, that is more of an anomaly rather than, uh, anything you should hold on to indicative going forward. I think a successful program delivers about ten to fifteen percent in savings over the course of a contract.
All right, it says here in your, uh, that you're affiliated with Colonial Power Group?
Yes, that's correct.
They've done work in Rhode Island before, correct?
Say the, I'm sorry.
They've done work in Rhode Island?
Uh, just, Westerly is our, our only existing client that we're moving forward at this time between, uh, us and Colonial Power Group. But the city of Boston, city of Lowell, Springfield, all of the major municipalities in Massachusetts use Colonial Power Group as, as their aggregator.
Councilman?
So, you have all these companies being like the delivery portion of your bill. Is that kind of what this is? It's for the delivery?
It's a great question, uh, counselor. Uh, so there's really two portions to the bill. There's the delivery, the wires charges that Rhode Island Energy charges you just for, again, the delivery and distribution of the electrons, and then there's the cost of the commodity. That's the energy supply charge. This program replaces the energy supply charge, which at varying times, especially during the wintertime, can be about seventy percent of your Rhode Island Energy invoice. So it's the bulk of, uh, of, of what consumers pay is, is what we replace.
Councilman?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, I don't know if it was your company, but I think we've got a presentation out there.
We had one before, yes.
A while ago, and two of the things that I remember that, that stuck out to me, and I'm, I'm not saying it's necessarily a bad thing to do, it seems like it's something that a lot more places are doing, even if it's not necessarily in Rhode Island, but one is, you could also get locked into a higher price, right, than what?
Yeah, so actually, my competitor, I only have one competitor in the state, and that's a company called Good Energy. And so their program is different from ours in that they do offer a savings guarantee. So they offer in their program always to offer the residents of their town a savings versus Rhode Island Energy. Our program doesn't have that savings guarantee. We differentiate ourselves from the standpoint that, yes, they deliver savings, but if you looked at the city of Providence's rate right now for their aggregation, Rhode Island Energy is at, you know, ten point five cents, I believe, and they're offering a ten cent price. And in the winter time, this past winter, when our energy went to seventeen cents, they were at sixteen point two five cents, so really minimal savings. What we're looking to do is create budget certainty, budget savings over a long-term contract. So if we do a three-year contract at nine, ten, eleven cents, we're gonna see the bulk of the savings for North Providence residents over the winter time. And then we're gonna be at even and sometimes even take a small loss during the summer months versus Rhode Island Energy. But the losses or the parity we're gonna be at during the summertime is more than overcome with the savings that we can deliver during the winter months, when Rhode Island Energy tends to be at its highest. And so I think if you measure up our program versus theirs, in the long term, the residents get material savings opportunities from us versus nominal, if not insignificant, savings in a Providence program.
Councilman?
So, just to expand a little bit, I want, Mario just asked you, we had someone come a few years back, if you remember, and what I didn't like about it was that if we were to sign up with your energy company, that every resident in this town signs up for it. Do they have to opt out in order to get out?
They do, they do, and as the president asked me a moment ago, the reason I got the coldest reception in Burl Hill was because of the opt-out feature. I was pretty much run out of town as a result of that. But it, it certainly isn't for every community, and, you know, this is informational only, but the reason that it's an opt-out mechanism is that Rhode Island has had an opt-in private supplier option for the better part of twenty-three years at this point in time. And only twenty percent of the marketplace has moved forward with that. It just hasn't been marketed well, and the other issue with it is the consumer protections surrounding that private option. People sign up for an Amazon gift card or an Amex gift card. They get a great rate for three months or six months, they stop paying attention to the electricity invoice, and when that contract expires, the rate explodes on them, they've given back all the benefit of that. So the Rhode Island Legislature adopted this mechanism to kind of mirror some of the success that Massachusetts has had with this program in delivering long-term savings with consumer protections that can really deliver finally that, that energy choice that the legislature thought they were providing for everyone back in two thousand twenty-two. But really, at this point in time, only our large businesses, our large municipalities have only benefited from the choice program. This seeks to, to deliver it to residential and small commercial customers.
Councilman?
And if I remember correctly, part of the reason for that is the more people you have in your orbit, the better you're able to negotiate pricing or...
Absolutely, absolutely. There's economies of scale at play there. And so if I take a look at a marketplace like Rhode Island, and I market to individual households, individual small businesses, it costs about a hundred and eighty-five dollars per customer acquisition under that model. And so with this model, you wipe out the cost of customer acquisition entirely. So not only you get the economies of scale with that collective buying group, but you also don't have to account for what would typically be a significant barrier to entry from a cost-per-customer acquisition standpoint.
Well, there's one more question. So, does the fact that other cities and towns do it or don't do it impact, like, like who's your group? So like, if we were to join in?
Yes.
Do we get to have the power of the Massachusetts municipalities behind us, or? I guess what I'm saying is if five Rhode Island or one Rhode Island municipality goes with your program?
Sure.
Does that impact your ability in the market?
No, so North Providence would stand on its own two feet and have its own program. We do have some communities in other states that have banded together. Typically, the smaller communities will sometimes do that, they'll have five or six or seven. But you're all in the municipal space, and you know how hard it can be sometimes to negotiate a multilateral community contract with everybody having to sign on the same day, especially since this is a commodity. Very, very difficult, and there's also input in terms of what communities want to move forward with which plans. Some of our communities offer a maximized savings rate, and some of our communities want to build in more of a sustainability bend to the offering that they do. So they want to offer a twenty-five or a fifty percent renewable inclusion in the, in the power that they, that they consume on behalf of the residents. So typically, we recommend that communities try, at least initially, to go off on their own, and that way, they, they maintain power over their own program and don't have to seek advice from others.
Okay, councilor, just one more question. Sure.
So if I remember correctly, that you don't get a savings on the total of your electric bill? Is it just on that small part that you were saying earlier?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say small. It is the largest portion of the bill, and it gets up to about seventy percent during the winter months. So it's, it's a sizable portion of the bill.
Okay, 'cause if I remember correctly, the other people were here, the savings were extremely minimal.
And I believe that was my competitor, Good Energy, and that's just their program. They do offer a guaranteed savings, but it's, as long as they're below Rhode Island Energy, they fulfill that promise. And if you go back in the track record of the year and a half they've been operating, you know, it, it has been rather minimal in terms of the savings. So I, I would say just to add that as these programs mature in time, the one thing that residents really do tend to latch on to, and the reason it has a high rate of, I'm trying to, trying to think of the term I'm using. The reason they keep so many customers, a high percent of the customers, ninety-two percent of customers typically stay in these programs, is because of the smoothness of that budget certainty, and they're not seeing that escalation where, you know, I'm using the same amount of power that I used in September and October, but yet my bill almost doubled. You know, for residents on fixed income, that's quite compelling. So it's the savings really launches the program, but the budget certainty is why the retention rate is so high over time. And then the last thing I would mention is that anybody can come and go, it's a universal access program. So even if North Providence decided to move forward and did a two-year agreement, someone can come and go on the very next meter read date after this is announced. Or if someone's visiting family in Florida or South Carolina or Illinois, they miss the opt-out notice. All they do is make a phone call, send us an email, and they're right back with Rhode Island Energy the very next month, so...
Okay, thank you. It's a very informative presentation. I'm gonna refer this to our finance committee
Okay.
meeting, so we can have you in and really dig down a little deeper. I think there's some more questions from the council.
Sure.
So I'd like to entertain that motion?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Martone, and we'll reach out in the next month when that next meeting is.
All right, great, thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, thank you. Item number fifteen, resolution twenty-five dash zero zero two, discussion impossible, vote on the passage of resolution twenty-five dash zero zero two concerning Vision Zero Policy Safe Roadways. Planning director stated it was okay with the police chief. Any questions on resolution twenty-five dash zero zero two? Motion to pass the resolution. Motion made by Councilman Laporteo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti, all those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number sixteen, ordinance introduction, discussion impossible, vote to introduce ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero seven, amending the building official fee schedule. Do you have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Pollak, all those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to dispense with the reading.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Martone, all those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number seventeen, ordinance introduction, I've been informed to pass this off the agenda. Item number eighteen, Our Lady of Fatima Hospital, discussion impossible, vote on the sale of Our Lady of Fatima Hospital. I don't think there's anything new to report unless...
Well, the, the bonds did not sell, which...
Is that confirmed?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's confirmed. But I, I don't think that means I'm gonna stop trying, but, so I guess we'll see what happens.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add? Oh, yeah, there has been a rumor that, well, the, the bonds did not sell, and we do not know what that means for the future of that deal, so... Item number nineteen, resignation letter, received letter of resignation to be accepted with regret from Ken Conti of the North Providence Land Trust. Do you have a motion to accept the resignation letter? Motion been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, seconded by Councilman Pollak, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty, board appointments, town council discussion action regarding appointments to be made to the following boards. Land Trust, new mayorial appointment, Catherine Lanny, do you have a motion to appoint Catherine Lanny to the Land Trust? Motion been made by Councilman Pollak, seconded by Councilman Laporteo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-one, golf balls from Lewis Quizzit, Councilman Pollak would like discussion impossible vote regarding golf balls from Lewis Quizzit Golf Course landing on a property on Clement Street. Councilman?
Mr. President, I received correspondence from someone that lives right on Clement Street. I guess there's an issue with some golf balls going over the fence. The fence in that location at Lewis Quizzit, the netting is not high, but my understanding is the bushes are exceeding the fence. I'm looking to, and I spoke to Councilman Laporteo. I believe National Grid might own some of that, those bushes and trees. I'm looking to send correspondence as the first motion to National Grid, get them to trim that as a first step to maybe address this.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Pollak, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone, any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alls?
Have we confirmed whether there's any correlation between when councilmen are playing on Lewis Quizzit and when the balls hit through the Navy jacks?
I, I cannot confirm nor deny that it is mine.
Any further discussion?
But I know cutting less trees might not be the, might not be the answer, that's just what I'm saying.
All those in favor?
More may help.
Alls opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, do you have a second motion? Might be a good idea, maybe if you want to send this to the Public Safety Committee.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
All right, is that a form of motion? Public Safety. Motion's been made by Councilman Pollak, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone, alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-three, stop sign, Councilman Laporteo requests discussion and possible vote on a stop sign at the intersection of Barber Inn Drive and Woodhaven Boulevard. Councilman?
Yes, thank you. I've received several calls from several different people that live in the area. Up in Woodhaven, it seems to be a pretty, pretty tough area where people just blow through the stop signs and speed through the streets, and a lot of hills there, so they just continually go down there. Like to see if we could have a stop sign, they would like to see if we have a stop sign put down there in that area. I believe we'd have to make a, a motion to move this to ordinance first.
Motion's been made by Councilman Laporteo?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-three. Pruning bushes, Councilman Laporteo requests discussion and possible vote on residents' concerns regarding pruning of bushes on Esther Drive and Sherwood Avenue that are blocking the view of oncoming traffic. Councilman?
Likewise, bushes at Esther, at Sherwood are very close to the corner, posing a blind spot when people are oncoming in traffic. Like to have, again, send us over to ordinance and contact the people to have the bushes cut.
I don't think there's anything we could do by ordinance, but...
Send it to DPW, don't we?
We could send it to Public Safety, or we could send a message, communication to DPW to, in the, housing inspector to see if there's any violations.
Let's, let's, yeah, let's send it to DPW.
Okay.
Have them take a look at it.
All right, motions?
It is on private property, that's why, that's why I was questioning.
If it's on a private property, I would suggest that we notify the building, in, a building inspector's office or the zoning office.
Okay, let's do that, yes.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Laporteo, seconded by Councilman Bacala. Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-five, tax abatements under one thousand dollars, town council discussion in action, possible vote for the approval of illicit tax abatements under one thousand dollars received from tax assessor in the amount of one thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents for motor vehicles. Do you have a motion to abate?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone, any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-six, tax abatements over one thousand dollars, town council discussion in action, possible vote for the approval of illicit tax abatements over one thousand dollars received from tax assessor in the amount of one thousand eighty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents for motor vehicles. Do you have a motion to send us to the Finance Committee?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-seven, Public Safety Committee Report, town council discussion in action with regard to Public Safety Committee Report presented by Councilman Pollak.
Yes, we met on May twenty-ninth. We had numerous residents from Beckside, was there also Mayor Lombardi and Bernie Salvatore was there. Dave D'Amico, unfortunately, was not able to make it, he was away, he had prior plans. We're just gonna continue this, Councilman Laporteo is gonna follow up with Dave D'Amico, and also speak to our council, and then we'll report back once we get more information.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept Councilman Pollak's report?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Laporteo. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-eight, claims submitted, town council discussion impossible vote with regard to a claim received from the following. Andrea Cipriano, twenty-two Plymouth Road, North Providence, Rhode Island, do you have a motion to send this to the Claims Committee?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed, the ayes have it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded.